Let's go ahead and call me Yoder, and I want to thank everyone for coming, all of our guests tonight. And thank each one for being here. We're going to have our pledge of allegiance, and then Mr. Ed Howe is going to lead us in our prayer. Let's have our pledge of allegiance.
Let's pray. Father, we thank you for this day, we thank you for this city. We pray that you continue to bless the leaders, bless them to make this a better city, a better community. And pray that our conversation will be in keeping with what you had us to do. Father, we just pray that you lead us and guide us this night, forgive us for our sins, Christ, in your name.
First on our agenda is a recommendation to approve the minutes of our last meeting. Would there be a motion to approve this meeting? Not much motion. Adrian, is there a second?
I'll say it.
Adrian, thank you. All in favor, say aye. Next, we have a presentation from Alvin Power for $2,000. And this will be for George Torres' pocket sign, or pocket park, what we call the pocket park. And a few people would come forward and tell us what this is, what the grant was for. I think I gave a copy of that last package yesterday. That's all right.
This grant, been talking away for several months. It's called the Gateway Grant by Alvin Power. It's in its fourth year. It's a $2,000 grant for signs, welcome to signs, pocket park signs, similar to what y'all got here. And I know, wanted to add the brick, redo the brick around the sign to make it match the agri-plaster there. So I thought it was a good opportunity, Wade and I have been working together and applied for it. Six or eight weeks ago, it was awarded the grant. And so tonight, just want to come and present you with a $2,000 check from Alvin.
Do you want to come down?
Sure. What, you want me to come up there? Alright.
It's what?
Thank you for this, sir.
Appreciate it.
And I will say that what I handed you was the press release that went out statewide. There was 33 other, or 32 other grants, included Hamilton, of about $60,000 total given out. So y'all were one of 33 cities statewide, which is really good, and I appreciate it. And this is a little medallion that they give to the cities, too. Just like, as a token of our appreciation. Thank y'all.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank y'all.
We appreciate Alvin Power and that made it possible, because that would go a long way forward. Getting the sign moved, what we want to do is move it back just a little bit and raise it up. It'd be in between two steel posts that hold the sign, then around the two steel posts be brick like the agri-plaster. Same brick. Everything's been coordinated, three or four contractors at the same time. So we're really waiting on, I could get the sign already up, the post up, but I really want to kind of wait till one, our brick player, which is one of the others, did all the others. His schedule's still probably two, three weeks away. So I didn't want to do it back and forth for a long period of time. But hopefully we can get all coordinated in the next few weeks, get started on it, and get it done at one time. That's the reason for not going ahead and doing it earlier. But it'll match the agri-plaster post, and I think it'll look much better than what it is. So, thank you, Alvin Power. Next on the agenda is a presentation by a chamber representative. Dan, or somebody want to come forward and talk to us for a few minutes? We want to remind everybody that October 31st is the Bud at your Fall Fest, which is in a couple of weeks. And also, we have another presentation after that. Dan, can you, I'll just turn it over to you.
This is basically just flyers that were passed around town. It's also got the map of the downtown area, where things are going to be, entrances and exits and things like that on there. But we decided to do something different this year. We've added a Friday night concert to the festival. It's going to be Friday, October 30th, beginning at 7:00 p.m. We've got a couple of bands that's going to be coming, Cooter Brown and Lane Coligut is going to be there Friday night. Some of the businesses are going to be open, we have midnight madness sales also that night. And then, of course, on Saturday, we will have the festival as always from 9:00 till about 4:00 p.m. on that. We're going to have arts and crafts, we'll have the food vendors, same place that we had them last year. We're going to have the car show, truck show, motorcycle show, all of those still the same. They're going to be in the same area that they were last year. This year, also, we're going to have two different stages. Last year, we just had it one stage in the parking lot there of the First Baptist Church. We're still going to have that one, that's where the Friday night concert's going to be. But we're also going to have one on the west side of the courthouse square. And that's where we will have our tourers, dance teams, and folks like that. We'll have people there to do their routine and stuff like that. But again, it's October the 30th, Friday night, there's no games that night. Hamilton plays on Thursday night, so everybody come out and enjoy the concert. And then we'll have the Fall Festival from 9:00 to 4:00 on Saturday. Do you have any questions?
I appreciate the chamber, you've put a lot of, how many vendors do you have so far?
We have several.
Is there time for others to still, if they want to? They go on your website?
Yes, they can still go on the website, you can go to brff.org, and they can still register there. We also have the t-shirts in. You can pick up a t-shirt at First National, First State, or Lister Hill. Those are available for sale, and we'll also have them the day of the event to sell.
She has on one, turn around and learn how to say it.
Come on, boss.
Right at you.
Floating the river in the kayak. Okay. Thank you, appreciate you, Alvin.
This next one, too, might concern you, but we'll go ahead and do this. And what something to do each and every year is a recommendation to waive the business license fees for all vendors who will be participating in the festival. That way, y'all, but they do pay sales tax, I believe, to do online license. So the sales tax is still collected. There's no need to buy an expensive license for a few hours. So, is there be a motion to waive that fee? Is there a second?
I'll say it.
Adrian, thank you. All in favor, say aye. Aye, thank you very much. Next is announced that NACOG has awarded the City of Hamilton Senior Center a 15-passenger van. And this is due to the Hamilton Senior Center having the greatest participation throughout the NACOG region. We have Brenda here with us tonight. What they want to do is, a few weeks ago, or a couple of weeks ago, we met with them, Keith Jones and several from NACOG, and they want to give us a 15-passenger van. So the city will have, we can use it for the senior center, their daily meals, that they'll be taking out every day. Plus, if they want to have a field trip, it'd be the van to use. All we have to do is ensure it in its office. Francis, you want to add anything to that, and I'll just bring the two?
Yes, this is over a five-county area that Keith Jones with NACOG that they serve. So, you know, he said the board sort of was in favor of wanting us to have a car. And he said absolutely not, with the attendance we were having. And that is attributed to Brenda and her staff and the fine work she does over there. I'm telling you, we were with her the other day looking at some things at the rig, and they were just coming and going the whole time we were there. In fact, you were out that day, you'll see. But NACOG is definitely on our side, and he really wholesome, I think, just to make sure that we got him. It's going to be such an asset, and he says it's in great condition. So we're just extremely proud that Ed, we hope that you can give us some positive publicity and all that, once we get it. And make it known that what they're doing for us, and the fine job, of course, that Brenda's doing over there, also.
Is it a newer used, or?
It's a used.
It's used.
Used, but he says it's-
I haven't seen the van. Brenda, can you tell us anything, add anything to it?
Have you seen it?
As you know-
Well, unless it's the van that we got already, is the one that we'll be keeping. It is a 15-passenger van that we handle, and it's in good shape.
And it's used to take meals out every day? How many meals a day?
We're taking out 46 meals a day.
And how many we feed in the house?
Forty-one.
So about ninety, about ninety folks a day?
And when we first came in on this administration, it was sometimes 10, most 15, something like that. So Brenda needs everyone's appreciation for the, and it's been hard work. She's added a lot of things to the program up there. And when I go to NACOG meetings and the muscle shows, they are just so complimentary of her. And it's almost like she's used as an example throughout the five counties, quite frankly. She's doing the best of any throughout those five counties. So we just applaud you, Brenda.
Mr. Mayor, she won't do the wrong harm, but I'll help her.
Yes, sir.
They did not bring any food today.
I know.
But we had food, because Brenda went out and got it Friday then.
I think there was a miscommunication, thinking the senior center was closed today. But she came by the office this morning and made sure that she went and got the food so y'all could have lunch.
Yes, she did.
And I appreciate that, of course.
Yeah, that's the work of you.
Yes, I agree. I agree. Now, accepting this, what we would have to do, now NACOG is cutting back on some things. They're not, they would pay us the fuel that it takes to deliver these meals every day. But cutting back on the help, they hire somebody to take those meals every day. So we would have to have a driver. Only thing, we're going to have to pay for a driver. We do get the van, it's ours to use anywhere we want to. I mean, accepting this, because if we don't do it, then probably the meals won't be delivered.
We'll have to have anything.
We'll have anything.
And they can also take field trips.
But how long does it take to take the meals out? A few hours a day?
A couple of hours a day.
So, saying that, I mean, we still have to have a driver, which we'll have to determine. I guess if it was doing it now, we'd be the ones paying them instead of NACOG. That's the only difference.
So they're all those state cuts.
But they felt like we deserved the van because of our success that we've had with the senior center. And I think we should do, I think we should keep serving our senior center citizens as much as possible, even if we do have to replace and pay the driver ourselves just a few hours a day.
George Stupalak.
What's your name?
George Stupalak.
George Stupalak. So what I feel like we do, and what she's getting paid from NACOG do, we can pay her to do it instead of NACOG.
So, so are we getting the van that they've been using?
Well, I'm not sure if we, I think so, but I'm not, hasn't made that clear. But what they needed was us to accept it, and if we accept it, then it's ours to use. And then would, in agreeing to take it, would be agree, also agreeing to pay the driver instead of them. Because they are making cuts, and it's statewide.
Insurance, okay.
Yes. But we'd have title to it, we just have to insure it. I think it's in the deal. Would there be a motion to accept this?
I don't like a motion to accept.
Is there a second?
I'll say it.
Adrian, thank you.
Alvin, we owe-
All in favor, say aye. You have a couple of bids before you, on a recommendation for a building that the historical society is asking for. And it is a 10-to-20 garden shed building to be used as restrooms for the Hamilton Sons' house. The purchase of the building will be $32.65, be paid with caper approval coming. Had two offers, two bids, one from Cotton States, one from Scotty Sanders, Home Center. His bid was a little bit higher, about a little less than $400 higher, maybe $350. They're both almost exactly the same. One of the differences would be, the Cotton States building, the sidewalks are two-by, two-by-four centers. And the studs are two-by-four centers. The one that Scotty had is two-by-16, oh, 16-inch centers. That's the only major difference, everything else is the same warranty. I think the Cotton States bid has a 30-year single, and the other bidder has a 25-year single. So, you know, I put the one that was leased on the-
Where is that one?
It's, uh-
Cotton State?
Oh, God, it's on there. Maybe in that timeline right there. They're both the same, with your working ship the same. So, I talked to Scotty about the state, and he's fine either way.
Does Cotton State, is it set up and tied down?
It is set up, and they don't do the tie-downs, that's also another difference. I mean, for the amount of money, if you want to do a little bit more for the tie-down, that's fine. That's about the only difference, other than being on two-by-four, I mean, two-by-16-inch centers or 24 centers. Spend a little bit more, you might get just a little bit better, but it's probably all we do.
So you said the cotton one's got a 30-year on its single?
Yes, that's the brochure I got in office, it's not on here, but it's on-
And they're in wood, they're working ships.
They're all treated wood, two-by-six floor joists, five-eighths walls. Both are exactly the same, except for the sidewalk says, what's two-foot centers, minus six. So would be a recommendation to save the lowest one, or you want to go with the other one?
How much does it going to cost to tie it down?
Well, I don't know that they want that. They may put a different type foundation when they said, said. It didn't, you know, it didn't say about the tie-down, the cost of it. I think both of them are tying it tie-down, maybe about the same, actually.
And it's going to be tied down regardless?
Yes.
But does Scotty's, does it tie down, is that, it is included?
Yeah, it is, yes.
And actually, it's different.
There's not much difference at all, except just a little bit on the sidewalks, the way the studs are on the sidewalks. Both are treated material, both have singles, both are treated light, both has a metal door. Almost exactly the same, just a couple differences.
Is it going to be, we might say it now may stick on concrete, so that was some kind of, what's the line?
Not yet.
Not yet.
Unless we do that.
But I know it's not included here.
No, it's not included, no.
So Scotty's, whatever, since Scotty's walls are closer together than in this other one, Scotty's is going to be pushed there?
And when the four-by, two-by, when the four-by sheets come together, though, where they're put together, they're doubled. So one, two, or four, or two. Then that's 24. It's actually probably a little bit better built, but it's a little bit higher, so either way-
There's some reason, isn't there, Scotty?
Yeah, so I mean, it's-
I'd like a motion, why don't we go with Scotty?
Okay. Okay. So Scotty's would be 36, 23, 45. Just change that on the agenda. 36, 23, 45, they're both practically the same, so it has maybe be just a little bit better built, as far as the sidewalks and things. So there's a motion to Scotty Home Center for the 10-to-20 garden shed, 36, 23, 45. Greg made a motion, and Tammy second. All in favor, say aye. Thank y'all. Next on the agenda is a recommendation for the rec center hired to take Mickey's place. What we did, we had probably 10, 212 applicants, we had 107 people a couple of weeks ago. Larry and I did, maybe just a little over, we did. And the recommendation personally be recommended is Brian Gilstrout. And that would be Larry's recommendation, and I agree with Larry on this. They're all good applicants, but I felt like Brian would be the best fit for just to take her position. It does say maintenance worker, but really, there's not a, I don't know, other than Mickey's position was assistant, not really hired an assistant, I feel like we need to make that decision later, whoever it is. But he'd be doing the exact same thing that Mickey did, same hours, same job description.
It's 12:30 though.
11:30 tonight, I think.
11:30 tonight?
I believe that's what it was, then 11:00 to 5:00. 11:00 to 5:00 on Friday. But that was the person to be recommended, and that's who I'm asking a motion to hire.
So he knows that he's going to be doing clerical work and all, during work?
He does, yes. The field work will be done, so he does do, get fields treated. He's aware of that, he's aware of the job description, because we went over that in detail with him. And he's very well, that might be having sign-up kids and take money and run the rig at the office where you're there and manage them, it's in the building, and also the high school workers that stay, or some.
I'd like a motion, if we all have it.
Okay, I'll say it.
Could you have something?
Yeah, all in favor, say aye. And I'll have his start date, and he said if he did get the job, he could probably start right away. So we won't have a start date in a minute, but as soon as he can start, that's when he'll start. Because it may not have to work two weeks, no, he may start in two, three days, actually. Okay, number eight is, several months ago, we applied for a grant for the water improvement project at Key Branch Housing Authority, and proceed, we did get a grant, and this is not your time yet, but we did get, it was $158,000 for the grant, is that correct?
That's right.
That's part of our grant, in Hamilton, several months ago, we did this, we agreed, part of it, housing authorities going to bring part of it. And go ahead and tell us what that's going to be, replacing water lines?
Replacing water lines at Key Branch Housing Authority?
Yeah.
Right now, you've got some old galvanized water lines in that area, have a lot of leaks, a lot of low pressure.
Yeah.
Upgrading the system with new PVC water lines and new service lines.
And they've been moving all the water meters up, getting them away from the, behind the apartments. Where now, the guys have to go behind every single apartment in the whole projects and read them. Then they'll be all in one lines, they'll be moved, and it's a great project that both of us together can do.
But hey, it's the lower Key Branch, not the upper, isn't it? Because the upper is the utero.
Yes, I think they call it Oaky.
And there's, I mean, or a stint of-
There's, um, 84?
Yeah, right, it talks, 84, okay.
So what we'll be doing is accepting the resolution, authorizing, doing the occasion to do this. And they've already dialed and worked up to this point, just to use them for approval to do it. And go ahead and follow through with the grant, an obligation to well have when the grant's done. Would there be a motion to accept this resolution?
I'd like a motion.
I'll say it.
All in favor, say aye. Thank you.
Chief Rock, our last councilman, I think, Tim's told us that he was going to get some prices on some equipment, our trucks have been, in a couple of weeks, matter of fact, he did something on that, I think he'll leave them more to go inspect.
About 4:45 in the morning.
But, Tim, I've got the price, I think, and you've got his package here.
Tampa. What else, I have to break, this glove down.
Adrian, tell us places about the equipment you got.
This is the hose that will be going on one of the new trucks. And some, the engine third quarter, I think about 100 foot, 150 foot of land, is some that we just need to replace on the other trucks. That has been burned and fired, just out of time to take out of service. But it was 1,000 feet of five-inch hose, 400 feet of inch and third-quarter rubber hose, and 800 feet of yellow and white, inch and third-quarter hose and three-inch supply hose, 1,000 feet, to replace what we're taking off A and 3, the big five-inch hose, that was the most expensive, we're putting it on the new truck. And some phone to go in both of the new engines. It was $13,939.
Just going to, this is still not all of it, this is the most part.
The other stuff have been sent out to third-quarter vendors, and it's coming in slowly.
And this is from NAFCO?
NAFCO.
In A F C O.
Does this have to be bid out, Scott?
It's signed in the document. Okay, do you, well, you don't got prices on this, is it?
Yeah.
You just need the money to-
Yes, yes, you've already given permission to get the prices, we've just given permission to get it.
When you go to, is this the only inspection that you will do with the trucks?
Yes, they're being filed inspection.
And then, after that, we should be getting on?
I would say within two weeks.
Within two weeks, okay.
Well, good. Well, I'd like a motion that we purchase this, we can't get the trucks without the equipment to go on.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll say it.
Adrian, thank you. Can you have a discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Next is, two bids on sidewalk project that I think we need to do, not recommend we do it. It's a sidewalk project down First Avenue. Actually, going to pass the old Weaver's building and go down toward, going east. There's three buildings there, the last one being where the laundromat is, and two buildings back this side of that. It's sidewalks, it needs to be replaced. And in front of it, what we want to do is put another, like a curb. A sidewalk is high, once people pull up, that it's easy to drag bumpers. And the business owner in that area has purchased two buildings and made a good investment to revitalize that side of town and those buildings. I think it'd be good for us to replace those and make it easier. Easier to walk on, easier to park, and easier to use. And I've got two bids, one from Carl Parker, one from David Westbrook, both bid the same thing. David's Westbrook was 48.25, Carl's was beat to 200. And my recommendation is to go with David, 48.25. Would there be a motion to replace this?
I'd like a motion, please, please, would you?
Thank you, Adrian. Through a second.
I'll say it.
Adrian, thank you. All in favor, say aye. Thank you very much. Kurt, say it, the last thing, he said he's going to be late.
Last Thursday, I was on my way back from a conference in Mobile, and while I was on my way back, they had a bid on his own demolition for the muscle layer.
And while I was on my way back, they had a bid of his own demolition for the muscle layer. And I believe Francis was able to come and Liam was able to come, and I appreciate them taking time to come. And listen to the bid open, some of these contractors were there, there was probably what, six, seven contractors? But anyway.
I'm sorry.
We had, uh, several bids, a lot of interest in it. And Kurt, I'm just gonna turn it over to you, uh, let you tell us where we're at and, uh, which direction we need to go.
Okay. Alright, well, I, I did notice that some of you had the handwritten one, uh, you noticed.
I gave everybody a copy of all that I had. And then the second bidder, I copied several things from them, since the first bidder was disqualified, you can tell us the reason for that.
Yeah, the, uh, basement construction was the apparent low bidder. Uh, it turns out they did not have the, an alba contractor's license.
He didn't get?
Talked to the contractor's license board on Friday, had a extensive conversation with them and they said that, uh, they couldn't bid without the license.
Well, sure, Steve, we discussed that.
Wait, that was, that was not my understanding prior to that, but they, they explained it very succinctly on Friday.
They did everything?
So, um, so, uh, basement, I called basement and talked to them about it and informed them what the board's decision was and obviously they weren't happy, but, but I'm sure. So, uh.
So you went through the state board?
I did, goes to the state board and.
And they said no?
They said no.
Okay.
So that, that, they're the final authority on that.
That's right.
Actually nothing we can do about that. So talked then to our second low bidder, which was TOA LLC, TriStar America from Door Cross, Georgia. And they sent us some references of some projects that they have worked on. I believe from all that we can determine about them, that they are a, a very reputable contractor. Demolition is all they do. Uh, the basement construction, they had some other areas that they were into also, the TriStar, it's consolidated, demolition, all of those out. They understand the business and have done it, and they take the seasonal references, they've done it a whole lot of the place. So their low bid then was, uh, two hundred and sixty-seven thousand. And that is removing the asbestos from the building, that's demolishing the building, that's leaving you with a piece of grain. There will be anything left out there, but grass and dirt. Uh, when they did that, so that takes care of everything in reference to the building as far as the demolition is concerned. If you look on the next page, uh, you know, we've been for however many months now. Can you think how many months it's been, uh, working on this, you know, everything has been leading up to and planning and trying to decide what the plan's gonna be and what A D M, A D M was gonna let us do and how we're gonna do it. That has finally all, at this point, come together. Uh, and so now we have some, some pretty good numbers that we can feel fairly confident sharing that this is what it's gonna take to get us the rest of the way through it. So, beginning at the front there, uh, the B M P, this is for the stormwater. For the site yard, we already have a permit in hand for the stormwater, this is just to put those silk fences and check dams, those kind of things in place to do the monitoring during the process. To keep all that paperwork up with A D M. Since the soils are gone, that were bad on site. But with all the demolition work going on, with everything that's gonna be happening out there, we still have to maintain the, the site, not any silt runoff into, particularly since it's so close to the river. Not letting it go out into the river, so that, that's what that's all about. And you'll see there, the, the B M P installation, uh, we'll bid that as proposals, it's gonna be less than fifty thousand, have to get that done by a contractor. Then the weekly inspection and the B M P final report, that's our environmental focus. That adds up to about forty-one thousand six hundred. Page behind that. Then is the demolition document management and final report. And that number's a little lower than it probably has to be. But the reason for that is the same guy, the same environmental guy that we have here working on the stormwater will also be the same guy with the demolition. So we can share his costs between the two, between the two deals and save a few dollars that way. Uh, and that's all of the, we'll be taking, uh, tickets and monitoring the contractor during demolition process, making sure that they're hauling things where they're supposed to be hauling them to. Verifying that they're doing what they're supposed to be doing, making sure the asbestos goes where it's supposed to go and those type of things. That's that cost. And then the cost under that is the crushing of materials from the demolition. That's the rebar free concrete, that's the, uh, brick that they're not able to take off and get recycled. And then that's also some of the block in the building. And we'll use that material to fill in some lines and also maybe possibly fill in some other areas on site. If there is some leftover, I don't know that there will be, but if there is any leftover, that's really good material just to have, uh, that you can use for road basins. I know you can use the brick for your ball field, that there are lots of things you can do with that crushed material, it's a, it's a pretty highly solid after recyclable material right now, so.
Could it be sold if there's some left?
Could be sold. Yeah, absolutely. So I don't know that there will be, based on the amount of field that we have out there, but if there is, it, it, it's yours to do with what you will, what to do with it. Once we get crushed, that, that does say that it's based on less than a eight thousand tons, that came from the contractor. We had them, in their demolition bids, we had them list out the, what they estimated as the amount of materials to be hauled away. Best amount of materials to recycle, estimated amount of materials to be crushed. And this eight thousand tons comes from that TOA's bid. Uh, that says sixteen dollars a ton, that's a typo, it should be sixteen fifty per ton. I'm just gonna take my math over here. Notice that I didn't get it right. Uh, but, uh, yeah, it should be sixteen fifty a ton, uh, to add up to a hundred and thirty-two thousand. And again, we'll, we will put that out to be able to, when it comes time to crush that, as possible, that number could come in better. Uh, I did learn today, as a matter of fact, that TOA, the company that, if you choose them to be your demolition contractor, they have access to a crushing machine, so that could help that process. So, uh, then we get down to the pond stabilization. Uh, pond stabilization, in addition to the, the crushed material, we are still gonna require a little bit of, of pure Portland cement. Uh, they have to get the mixture, the pH, the chemical balance, whatever, whatever the, the magic word there is. Uh, they have to get that sludge just right chemically before they can start really fully mixing and carrying it place. So, there will be some Portland cement that's required with that, and then we'll add in the crushed material and then we'll cap that off with clay. So that that's a closed sale. Uh, and then the only, the only restriction then on that for future development out there is that we prefer that you not put a building or anything on top of it. And would really, really prefer that it be an impervious surface, some sort of parking lot, some, some sort of hardscape type area. Wouldn't have to be, but it would help if it was.
Can grass on top?
It would be grass on top for now. Yeah, it would be grass on top for now with hopefully a future parking lot, whatever the development may, may not be out there in the future. But you wouldn't wanna put, you know, a ball field or any kind of solid surface over the top of it that got wet regularly. You wanna keep water out of that area as much as possible. So there's that hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars. This one, this hundred and forty-eight thousand plus thirty-nine for the oversight and the maintenance and the making sure everything goes like it's supposed to go during that. Would fall under environmental services. This is a, it, it may be the first, I can't remember if she told me it was the first or one of the first times that A D M has allowed this type of material to be stabilized on site. Uh, so it needs to go well. You know, we, we don't need to, we don't need to mess this up. If you recall, uh, way back, again, at the very beginning of all this, A D M's first directive to us with those ponds was scoop it all out and haul it away, take it off to Atlanta or something. Spend lots, lots of money hauling water and sludge and everything out of there.
That is.
A very large number.
That was more than.
It was well over many dollars.
The bottom, yeah, absolutely.
But, so, um, that was A D M's first directive. So, um, Jimlin and our environmental team, y'all been Jimlin, she came up one time, they've worked real hard with A D M to, to try to, to work toward this goal that we have here. So we want to make sure that we put that under, again, under professional environmental services, so that we can really pick and choose, you know, what contractor we use to get that work done, to make sure that it's done, to make sure that it's done correctly. There's also, um, the length of the last sixteen-five down there, there's a tank, uh, inside of the ponds. Not entirely sure what it was used for, but it has some sludge in it, a lot of it that we have not yet addressed. That as we take down that tank, as part of the demolition contract, we'll have to get that sludge into the rest of the sludge with the ponds and get that, that handled there, so that's, that's what that extra charge there is for. And then you see the total for the pond stabilization, which brings our total there to three hundred and eighty-four thousand eight hundred dollars in addition to the demolition contract, two hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars.
Now this included those three phases that you spoke of the other day, the demolition, um, the crushing, oversight, uh, all of that is included in all of this.
When we're done, this, this, I believe it's six hundred and fifty-one thousand. This, when this six hundred and fifty-one thousand is done, you have a clean, environment and a clean site, all the reports are done with A D M, the thing is closed out with A D M.
And we're through with that?
And, and you're through with them.
Okay.
Well, now there, there'll be a covenant on the, the pond location for thirty-four years. But it just said you can't dig it up or do it again, which you wouldn't wanna do anymore. Uh, and then, um, the, the building will be gone, your site will be grassed, you'll have dirt, grass and closed ponds.
Can you mention about the last time you went over and about how quickly the place was even more so deteriorating?
Yes, when we, when we walked through for the pre-bid, which was two, three weeks ago. Yeah, yeah, Mayor was there. When we walked through for the pre-bid with the contractor two, three weeks ago, I was amazed at how far it had deteriorated just in the last few months, uh, it'd been, I don't know, two, three months before that, that I had been in it. Six months before that, and it's just, it's going quickly. The roof structure is, is going really, really fast. There were places that, in the back that had a few holes before and three months later, whole back section was gone. There were places where I stopped walking and the dirt away.
Well, it's going to get rid of A D M building, if you can see, without all these kids hanging out over there and running around top of the roof, first thing, not gonna be on.
Yes, I, I would, I would not recommend anybody going, I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't even go up there, scrap that. I mean, it's, it's, it's scary.
And, and the winds and doors, some of them, you could go through and then they could collapse the top of you.
And it's, the, the roof is just, it, it sections are just falling.
Yeah, but I mean, you, you, you could enter through the, through the side entrances.
There's all kind of ways to get in the building.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, so.
Uh, it'd be, uh, sort of.
If nothing is done, the building's gotta be secured.
Yeah, sure.
Always calling.
Short of a whole lot of plywood and steel and fencing, there, there's no way to keep you out of it right now, there's just too many doors into it.
So how much have we paid to date? What's gonna be the absolute total? How many have we already paid?
You have paid, um. Up to this point in studies and proposals and, and, uh, those type of things with G M C, you've paid a hundred thousand dollars, uh, on the environmental side. We paid forty-eight, seven fifty to Exotech to decant the ponds and get the water off of them, get a rating for this, this stage. Uh, and then there's also another twenty-eight thousand, uh, to us for the, the plan for the demolition in, in this part of the process. So, six fifty, eight, eight twenty-nine, eight thirty?
Quite a bit.
Quite a bit of money, it is, uh, it is a large amount of money, um.
I don't know, we've done any favors by the plan being given to us, I don't know.
It's, uh, you know, it's, uh, it's, it's one of those things, you know, this council, y'all didn't take this building, I don't even inherit this building from previous council's mayor. And, um, yeah, I agree, I don't think they've done any favors. But this, this is an opportunity to clean this up.
Kurt, the point to make is, had we done nothing, we still, we couldn't even begin to put a ball park walking trails, he, without any of that being done.
Can't do anything out there right now.
I mean, we couldn't, we couldn't do any, any outside activities with that building.
I, I don't know, we haven't decided, you know, what the plan is moving forward out there, but until this is taken care of, there, there is no plan.
Yeah.
Uh, there is, there is.
Well, their own terms is do that.
And let somebody get killed and then take it along.
Well, I didn't know what the council on do tonight, I know this is, I'm, I'm open to suggestions, I'm open to what the next meeting, or I'm open to do it tonight and get, and just go ahead and tackle it head on.
I talked to.
But I wanted them to see it.
What can I start on?
I, I talked to TOA, he said, how soon could they go? I said, they could possibly let you go tonight, he said, we're ready. So they, they, they could start with a month.
Right, mom.
And they have six months to do it?
They have six months to get it finished.
How much bond are we doing?
There's five million dollars, uh, a little over five million, well. And by doing this project, there may be other monies that won't be, other projects may be pushed back or just not have as much to spend toward them as we want to.
It does hurt the things that you possibly wanna do.
I did have, I did have one question on that. Um, when we get done here, is the site gonna be prepped for some other project? Are we gonna, have, have we got any plans for, cause we're gonna move a lot of dirt around and do a lot of construction work out there. When this site's finished, after we spent this eight hundred thousand, is it gonna be prepped for something else? Is there any other, in other words, are we gonna have to come back and move dirt again and we come back and do another project at this site?
There, there is not currently a magical plan for the site. Uh, the, the grading plan for the site now will be a gentle slope from the front parking lot toward the basement area and then a steeper slope down into the basement area. Uh, it, it'll be a sloped site, but it won't be prepared for what's going next because there haven't been any, uh, decisions made on what is going up.
Well, you can't do it all, but you gotta do it phases, I mean, next administration, maybe.
Then we are.
More money to do something with, I mean, we didn't, we didn't want it to be like this, we wanted to be able to, to take it down and put something over there, you know, Tommy.
Yeah, I just think it's, uh, it's frustrating.
And I didn't help this up and I'll tell you, if they hadn't had an inside person that's working for them, we wouldn't be as far along as we are. And, uh, I'm certainly, my personal opinion is I am for it, for moving on and getting it done and over with and moving on to something else. And we can, we'll do what we can do.
We, we do plan on leaving the utilities, there's some water, water and sewer utilities out there, we're not gonna pull those out of the ground, so they'll, they'll still be in the place they're at now.
Is that removing the big water tank over the next, uh?
Big water tank will be gone.
Good. Never was used, that I don't trust it.
Do not believe it was ever put in service, you know.
And that was with Tennessee River?
Tennessee River. Cause we had to, I remember cause we had to get a special deal on their logo, their logo and tank, I remember.
That's a joke, that's a joke.
We have had some people that have asked about the light post and things like that, are they just gonna be torn down or do we have the right to sell those or?
Ask not to, not to sell or demo over the, um, flag post.
Flag lights, right, okay.
But the lights, we, you know, we had one individual that asked to buy the, the lights.
The lights that are on the poles, lights on poles are gonna stay.
Okay.
The, the light poles, the sewer, the, the flag pole was supposed to come down, but we can, we can.
You know, we're not taking them down.
We're gonna keep them. Okay. Um, we, we worked that out, that's on the road. Uh, the light poles, the water, the sewer and the storm drainage pipes that are in the ground now will stay, we're not gonna rip any of those down. Because like you, if we ripped them out, we might need them later, depending on what, what we do or don't do, so.
If we proceed with this, uh, and go ahead, will there be a guard or someone that thought would, uh, supply it at night or whatever to watch over any of that? Or do you know, is that their responsibility?
That's their, their, their responsibility is to require what they, to comply with all OSHA requirements.
Okay.
Which means if they leave a big hole, then it's their responsibility to cover that hole, guard that hole or mark that hole or. Uh, I did advise them that they would probably be well to put up signs all over the road that say construct area, do not enter near your own risk, all those sort of things. Um, it's, it's a really large site to try to put some kind of fence around. It's a really large site to try to put some kind of fence around. But, you know, if there's an area that's particularly dangerous, I'm sure that they will. But that falls on them and their insurance and their responsibility.
I think we mentioned this the other day, but the land sites that they will need for all these different materials, we do have those in close enough proximity that they're aware of that and where to take them and.
Yeah, they've dealt with it.
They've dealt with it, okay.
I believe that.
I didn't want us to have to, you know, go so far away.
When I was talking to him today, I believe that hazardous landfill, he said it was two, two hours away. Not sure where that is.
Where is the land, did you hear that?
Not sure. Not sure which one he was taking it to, but he had it set up for somewhere, it was an hour and a half, two hours away. There's some construction debris landfills around here that he can use for some office materials. We're not really hauling that much stuff away from the site.
So, are you, are they crushed?
A lot of, you know, a lot of the brick, a lot of the block, all the rebar free concrete be crushed. Every bit of steel he can get out of thing, he's taking to a recycler, because that's where his money is.
And how long did he have that in here or?
Six months, he has six months.
Has six months for the date of start?
When we started, yes.
Six months.
So, if we start in November, we should be, by the end of May, we should be in May, should be ready. April.
And back on the brick, early crush as much as needed, but then what's left will be cleaned to be reused, or?
Well, what'll happen during the demolition process is they'll stockpile rebar free concrete, block and brick back there close to the ponds, where we'll crush it later. So, once that stockpile has started, then, I know that several people have mentioned getting brick and cleaning it up for some paths or some sort of thing. Once those piles are started, the city is free to go down there and do, it's your pile. You're free to do whatever you want to with that pile prior to it being crushed.
But we're not paying for that extra to be cement knocked off of it, stacked up or something.
You'll have to clean it. You'll have to find some way to clean it yourself.
And I'd like to have it, but I'm not, I'm not normally.
But, yeah, it's your stockpile. Once it's in that stockpile, you can do whatever you want with it, clean it, take it somewhere or put it somewhere else, whatever you want to do with it. Once we start crushing, though, we don't want to stop.
Right.
You know, once we get to the crushing process, which will be.
Which is, which is close, the crushing process will be very close to the end of the demolition process, so it'll be over into next, you know, early summer. And so, you know, hopefully by then you've gotten out everything you want out and we just start piling in and crushing.
Only thing is, Wade, if we put a, or if somebody would put a roof on it several years ago, we probably could have put a roof on it for less than it's going to cost a scare item, but.
Ten or ten, ten or twelve years ago?
I might.
Do you remember that, that's first estimate?
At least ten.
At least ten, possibly twelve years ago, I recall an estimate that Bert did for the current mayor at that time to put a new roof on it, that was seven fifty, maybe million dollars for a new roof, and that would have made a world difference. But, you know, this is what you've been hearing.
I'm ready to tear it down.
I'm ready to.
Is there a motion to go with the second bid to TOA LLC? And proceed with the rest of the presentation that Kurt has made?
I like a motion that we proceed with TOA. Was he the one here the other day?
He was, he was the guy from Georgia with the gray, gray hair, I think.
Right, that's right. Excuse me, yeah, I'm in the lobby.
He has some of the more intelligent questions during the.
He did, he did. Size of wing, yeah.
Is there a second on Francis' motion?
I'll say it.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any other?
Well, it is a big project and we did it.
Kurt will be the first to go on. We'll be seeing where they started and then there will be a few more, you know, as we go through and the smaller pieces that go with it, we'll have a few more bits to consider.
Kyle, tell them to get rolling this way.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Chris, thank you, E. Is there any other discussion or recommendations before you? It's all in agenda.
I need to go executive session with Mike just a little bit on personnel matter, but if we've got some more business, we can do that first, then do it.
Oh, I've got something here that has been on my mind for quite some time and the way that the law is known, you have to go ahead and proceed with this in a timely manner. And I feel like it probably, this is the best time to do it. There's always going to be repercussions for about anything that you do. And when you serve on council or as mayor or whatever, you're to serve with humility. And we do it because we're public servants, we enjoy it. I cannot believe the difference in how much it has changed and the workload has changed since I first served in, wait, in town then, in fact. Twenty years ago, it was there then, snacking picture. Tell me, I was asking too many questions and now Tammy has taken my place, so, you know. But anyway, January the twenty-third of ninety-six, the council pay was raised from a hundred to three hundred. And tonight, I would like to make a suggestion or make a motion that we raise it from three hundred to five hundred. Now, this will be the next administration. This does not affect this administration. It will be the ones coming in in twenty seventeen, so it should attract more people. Just to name a few things, we deal with about eighty million dollars worth of assets and got a payroll of about one point eight million dollars. And we have a budget of about six and a half by the time you put the water with it. It's between, Ellen told me that it was between nine and nine and a half million.
It's over nine million both.
So, it's not something that you can take lightly and it takes a lot of work. And that was one of the reasons I ran. And I've been in the situation where all these other guys are. It's hard to fill in everything that needs to be done, and that's really, you know, because I was retired. But I love it, I love the bad with the good, you know, and the sun comes up the next day. But we're dealing with this capital improvements money and we have been frugal, but yet we have done and accomplished a lot of things this administration. We've still got a year to go and hope there will be more. You've got to understand that it is a slow, meticulous process and you've got to have a lot of patience. And we deal with about seventy-eight employees, five of those being part-time, I've got one temporary. So, I feel like, I don't feel like that's out of proportion. The money is there, I've talked with Ellen on this very thing four times, and I've spoken to Scott, and you can verify this, three different times. So, I don't know whether I'll run next time or not. If I do, I hope tonight we can raise it to five hundred. If we don't, you know, that's everybody's own call. And if I don't run, I hope that it will, there will be some inclusion of some, a lot more people that will be interested in serving. No, we don't go into it for the money. When I first ran, I didn't even know we got a million, what we did, we got fifty dollars. We got fifty dollars the first time we served for a little bit, and then they raised it and it went to the hundred.
We got a hundred, then we raised it from a hundred to three hundred. And that was twenty years ago. And it hadn't been raised since then, since.
No, not a time, it's been twenty years on one month.
Mayor's salary hasn't either, both of them's been the same for the whole time.
Well, when Tammy, you know, makes an announcement, he just asked that if we did this, that we postponed it until next meeting when he could be here, so I don't, that's up to y'all.
Well, that's whatever you want to do. It spoke to the rest of the council, I've just.
He just asked that.
Said to do it when he was here. I did speak to everybody, I could be a pretty good lobbyist, I thought. And that's what you've got to do with this, so. But it is a big responsibility and it is not one that I take lightly. And I can assure you that this mayor's job is a twenty-four hour, seven day a week job. And, you know, he makes thirty thousand now and, yeah, he, he serves on the gas board, what's that, a thousand a month, well, that's what, twelve thousand a year? It needs to be raised at least five thousand, forty-seven thousand a year would be a decent, would be a decent salary. You could make a little bit better off. Of course, you'd have to be cut after that, wouldn't you? Actually.
Is it harder to attract good candidates, I mean, obviously y'all could, but is it harder to attract a larger number of good candidates with the pay that?
And start.
Well, I think the time it takes is just worth more than three hundred dollars.
Well, I draw two hundred and seventy-four dollars in a nickel.
It's a matter of how much time you put into it. And council members have to put a lot of time. If you're going to do this job seriously, it takes a lot of time. It's more than two hours a month, it's more than two meetings a month. I was a council member for twelve years and I know that every time I went to a ballgame or every time I went to eat, just like y'all are now, you still get asked questions about the city business, which is fine. You're elected to do those things. So, I know council members put multiple hours in, way above two meetings a month, because we have special meetings, we have emails back and forth, texts back and forth. And if you count the amount of time you put in, not getting paid much for hour.
This is a serious job.
I think it's a good idea. And, you know, I didn't know Tim wasn't going to be here until five o'clock. That's when we found out Tim wasn't coming, so.
The more people that move into Hamilton, the more services you provide. We're in what, thirteen miles from one city limit to the other, from the east to the west, I believe. And I hope we keep growing. I don't want to get like Birmingham or someplace like that. I like it where you go someplace and you say hi and you know them and you know if they got dogs and cats or, like when I was at the office, all that kind of stuff. Just love working with people, can't please everybody. No, everybody does not like it and does not like the decisions that I, or any of us always make. But that's okay, that's the democratic way. So, anyway, it's up to the rest of you, whatever you want to do. I don't need to vote if you want, if you want to wait, that's fine.
Is the proposal just for the council, councilor's pay or the mayor? I don't catch if you had a proposal for the mayor to vote.
I just mentioned that, that the mayor won't vote. What are your thoughts, or Tammy, or whoever?
If you don't do it, you need to do both of them.
It's odd feeling to sit here and try to, we just separate, you know, stormy days.
Well, you know, it's going to be the next administration.
That's right, it's not for us.
That's the thing about it.
And if we run, we get it, we'll be the beneficiary. But if not, well, somebody else will.
Somebody else will get the beneficiary, because we did get a hundred. We raised it to three hundred and the people didn't see in their mind, it's well worth it. And the mayor, as far as the mayor's salary goes, at the time it was twenty thousand. We raised it to thirty, twenty years ago, it's been the same ever since. And my opinion, it should be more. I'm not asking for me, I know that it'll be the next administration. But I can promise you, I work forty hours a week in my office, not counting weekends and nights. I've been busy all day today from eight o'clock to five o'clock with about thirty minutes. That's every day. So, I couldn't hold another job, no matter who gets this job.
Oh, it's Scott.
You cannot hold another job and do this full-time. You just can't do it, because who's going to help you?
Scott told me something interesting.
It's a time constraint. It's worth more, even if it's not full-time, it needs to be adjustable to make it worth, you know. If you had retirement.
Yeah, that's right.
And you're drawing retirement, this would be a perfect job for that. But if this is your sole living and you don't get any benefits, no retirement, no insurance, no nothing, but part-time, it's just well worth more than what it's paid. You know, that's my opinion.
Of course, and Scott made an interesting point to me the other day. He said, "Well, somebody might want to come in, you know, and just volunteer their services and not take anything." Now, we got any of that kind of rich folks around here that would do that? No, they expect to make a halfway decent living.
Francis made a motion, so either he can second it or we need to put it out for talk. And I didn't know Tim is going to make that suggestion.
Well, he just asked.
And I know Tim would like to.
Well, I love these things.
And I understand that.
I mean, he told me what he thought. He just said, he just sent an email and that he wasn't going to be here and if we did that to please, oh.
What's up, yeah? You want to wait, that's fine, but we can have it on the agenda. I didn't put it down on the agenda, because I didn't know for sure that I was even going to be here with this code that I paid, so. But within a little time, so I just thought I'd bring it up. If y'all want to wait, we can wait, if not, well.
I'd like to go ahead and second it, let's go ahead and vote. Okay. Now, one of, just the councilor, vote.
Do we have to do them together or separate?
I can do this separate.
Separate. Well, mine is, I'll make it for the council, since I brought that up first.
All right.
From three hundred to five hundred.
And Greg, wait a second. We know it starts the next administration, what's your date?
Twenty seventeen.
First Tuesday, second Tuesday, whenever they're sworn in, the next administration in two thousand sixteen, November. All right. Is there, can I second, is there any other discussion?
Well, I just feel bad, because he asked for us to wait, or he asked me to ask for us to wait, so.
Well, it's not your fault, it's not your fault, Tim. It's not his responsibility on you, I mean, I see what you mean, but, you know, I hate, I don't want to speak for him, but I know what he told me, so, anyway.
Well, I guess he can bring it up next time if he wants to and we can rehash it. Scott?
He can give his opinion.
He could vote it, don't he?
He's voted on, he can give his opinion.
Then he can't bring it up again?
If I can bring it up, we have to get a second.
Okay.
All right. Call in favor, three hundred to five hundred.
Five hundred.
Okay, thank you. Put me down, T, because I want to be the record, it's important, because I think it's worth it. Everybody was up.
Everybody.
All right, is there any other discussion?
Were we going to let him have a say, the mayor, or are we just going to go ahead and vote?
He can say, if we go ahead and do them, we need to do both tonight, we're going to do it. And he can still say his opinion at the next meeting.
I'm making a motion, Wade, that we raise the mayor's salary by about a dollar a year.
And Ellen is aware of these facts, or these figures? And he said that it was well within the budget. No, if sounds a bit spotty, and you can always ask.
And there's no guarantee that the mayor sits on the gas board, correct?
No.
No, it doesn't have to be the mayor.
It's how much now for the mayor?
Thirty.
Thirty, and we go to thirty-five.
Yes.
Can I second?
Any other discussions? All in favor, say aye. Now, put me down for the yes, T, on that, T. Greg, make a motion, one second. Thank you all, thank you, council. And we know this goes into the next administration. I've been here almost, all those have been here, you know, so it doesn't matter. It's not going to affect us anymore.
May I ask, since we're all, get it out of the way. Has there been any comparison, were there other surrounding areas, other surrounding cities?
I know, I'm not sure about the mayor's salaries in other cities. I know the council is five to six hundred, almost every town I've talked to is this size. It's the one or below. You know, board education is a lot more than they'd be, I think, once a month. So, I mean, it's five hundred is well within the range of what other council members get in the same-sized towns. I need, we need to talk to Mike just a few minutes, and it won't take long. But, so I need to go to executive session just a few minutes, then we'll come back out and, is there a motion going to executive session?
I'm making a motion.
I'll second. Just one personnel matter, it won't take us a few minutes. Thank you.
Do you want to go back and make a motion? Do you have a motion?
Okay, if you have a motion, you go back and second.
I'll second.
Yeah, you can second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And a motion to adjourn.
How much motion would you adjourn? I'll second it.
Francis, all in favor, say aye. Get that.